Before we're back on the campaign trail, however, you'll want to join City Club's new Interstate Max. The yellow line opens in May, but we've arranged for a special tour for City Club members. And that tour will be guided to highlight Light Rail's development, public art, environmental issues, and give you firsthand experience of where our tax dollars are going. It should be a fun excursion, so check your bulletin or the web for how to make your reservation. There are several other pretty exciting events coming up at City Club. On April 19th, for example, our new Leaders Council is cosponsoring, along with Willamette Week and the Bus Project, Candidates Gone Wild. It's a more freewheeling debate among mayoral and city council candidates at the Aladdin Theater. This will not be a genteel event like our Friday forums. So tickets are just $2. We're selling them today. As you leave, you can buy tickets, or you can buy them, I think, at the event. Then on April 21st, at World Cup Coffee, the New Leaders Council hosts the second installment of Coming to America, which is its two-part dialogue on refugees and immigrants in Portland. This month, our book group, Citizens Read, takes on Richard Florida's popular title, The Rise of the Creative Class. The group will meet on April 26th at the Zimmerman Community Center, which is in the Pearl District, and we'll be talking it over with economist Joe Cortrite. Then on April 27th, City Club welcomes members, current members, members who have recently joined, and those considering joining, to a relaxed after-work meet-and-greet to get better acquainted with the club and learn about opportunities to get involved. So that'll be at the club on the 27th after-work. Details about all of these events can be found in the bulletin or online at www.pdxcityclub.org. Almost finally here, City Club is in the middle of our spring annual Spring Membership Drive. Each week, we've been holding a raffle among new members, and each week, we've been giving away valuable prizes. I know you've been waiting for this. If you join today, we'll put your name into this week's drawing. And this week, we have a great hotel package courtesy of Portland's Hotel Vintage Plaza, as well as an autographed copy of City of Suspects, a mystery by our very own City Club Board Member Katie King, which features among its delights several scenes that take place at you guessed at the Vintage Plaza. Membership brochures and forms are on each table, or they're available from staff. Join City Club today, and you could be the next winner. Broadcast of City Club programs this quarter is made possible in part by corporate underwriting from Kaiser Permanente, Pope &amp; Talbot Inc., and Shorebank Pacific. We're grateful for their support. I'd also like to remind you that City Club offers copies of today's programs on audio CD and videotape for purchase. So on to our program. The campaign for City Commission Position Four is unlike any we've seen in recent Portland political history. On the one hand, we have Randy Leonard, a first-term commissioner, who in his winning campaign for this position in 2002 ran as somewhat of a populist. On the other hand, we have a group of neighborhood activists who have pledged to hang together to unseat Commissioner Leonard. The opponents have agreed that if any member of the group of six survives the May election, the remaining members of the group will actively support that candidate in the runoff election in November. With that brief introduction, let me turn the podium over to our moderator, Mark Zussman. Mark is editor of Willamette Week and is one of two owners of the City of Rose's newspaper publishing company, which publishes Willamette Week in Portland and The Reporter in Santa Fe, New Mexico. He has won numerous regional and national professional awards for his work, including the Gerald Loeb Award for Distinguished Business and Financial Journalism and the Bruce Baer Award, the most distinguished award in Oregon journalism. Mark will introduce our candidates today and moderate the forum. I'm going to step out of the line of fire and let him handle it here. Thanks.
That's a good start. Well, I don't know about you, but I'm looking forward to this, and I actually think it's kind of fitting that I'm in a bar stool. I'm not quite sure why. I'm really flattered to have been invited to moderate this debate, and I will try to keep these folks in line, given that we have a short period of time. We have several sections to this event. First, we're going to give each candidate 60 seconds to introduce themselves and tell us why they should be elected to city council. I will call on them in alphabetical order. Following that opening statement, they'll respond to two rounds of questions that have been suggested in advance of this meeting by City Club staff and the staff at Willamette Week. Finally, the candidates are going to have an opportunity to respond to written questions from the audience. If you have a question and if you are a City Club member, write it on one of the cards at your table and hold it up for a City Club staff member to collect. Please indicate on the card which candidate or candidates to whom you are directing the question, and we will be collecting questions throughout. Heather Kmetz over there at the table is going to be our timekeeper. She'll be signaling me when time is up on each question. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our candidates in alphabetical order. Frank Dixon is a lawyer and political consultant and is active in the Northwest District Association. Leonard Gard is a land use specialist and is a past president of the Selwood-Morland Improvement League. Mark Lakeman is a building designer and a member of the Southeast Uplift Board. Paul Leisner is a doctoral student at Portland State University and is a past president of the Mount Tabor Neighborhood Association. Randy Leonard has been a city commissioner since November 2002. Commissioner Leonard is a former firefighter and legislator. Bonnie McKnight is a fiscal and administrative services manager and is co-chairman of the Russell Neighborhood Association. Scott Stevens is a billing analyst for Pacific Power and is president of the Woodstock Neighborhood Association. And I need my glasses. Okay, let's get started. Candidates, we have each allotted you 60 seconds, or less, for you to tell us why we should elect you as our next city commissioner. And I'd like you to listen to the next instruction carefully. We don't want to hear why we should not reelect Commissioner Leonard. Or anyone else. You will have an opportunity later in the program to do so. This segment is for you to tell us specifically why we should elect you, and we will start with Frank Dixon.
Thank you, City Club, for the invitation. We're here to have a good time. I know you will, and I hope Mark will too. I've been here since 1976, long enough to see my neighborhood northwest Portland grow and prosper. Our true wealth is in human capital. Our quality of life can attract the best jobs and employers like no other city in America can. Seventy-seven percent of the jobs are in small business, and those small businesses will be the first to hire. Northwest Portland has a joint neighborhood and business effort shaping the renewal of 23rd. Every district needs a small business district liaison, and it's long past time for PDC to really open up its Quality Jobs Program and Equal Opportunity Fund for Small Businesses. I believe we need a regional government summons to hammer out stable funding for schools and local governments and stop the Salem insanity crippling our schools, stunting business growth, and damaging our economy. I believe together we can do these and many other things for the city of Portland. Together, we can get our city back on track. Thank you.
Thanks to the City Club for this invitation. I'm the land use specialist at Southwest Neighborhoods. I've worked there for eight and a half years, and in that time, I've worked on many city issues, primarily in the area of land use, transportation, the environment, and parks. And that interest and involvement in those kind of issues has led me to run for this position and to be here today. My main campaign theme is to focus more attention on neighborhood projects, projects that benefit directly the citizens of this city. I am not an ideological person in any way. I consider myself a moderate, and I look for pragmatic solutions to the issues facing our city. Thank you.
This election is about leadership and how we want to work together as a city. What do we love about this town is in our sense of identity in our, as being in a community where we participate. I'm running for council to champion open process, vision in action, and sustainable economic development. As founder of the City Repair Project, I have worked on behalf of Portland's uncommon vision, turning City Hall on its head a number of times, taking communities, city leaders, and the bureaus toward change together. If you vote for me, you vote for your community, because I convene, listen, gather resources, and work hard. And yet, we are in danger. This race is a watershed moment for Portland. As Robert Putnam said two weeks ago, Portland is the only major city in the USA where civic involvement is on the rise, and yet, the incumbent commissioner is blatantly hostile to civic involvement, our most shared value as a city. As to leadership, our question now is, how do we want to work together?
Mark, you came close to the line there.
I'm Paul Leisner. Thanks to the City Club. It's wonderful to be back here with you again. Many of you know me. I served as your research director for eight years, and I've worked with many of you, and together, we've studied how our city government works and how we can make it work better and make good changes for the future. I'm also a longtime community activist. I've served on the front lines in our neighborhoods, working with others to fix, identify the problems and fix them in a way that really works for the community. Why am I running? The city council has become increasingly disconnected from the community. It's lost touch with the important values that in the past made Portland a model of civic engagement for the nation. And these are the City Club values as well: meaningful citizen involvement, objective analysis and review of issues, policy based on clear vision and goals, and evaluations of programs to see whether they really work, and accountability, holding our elected officials accountable for their actions. We need positive and constructive change that takes us to a better future for Portland, not a backward slide into the poor governance and crony politics of Portland's darker days of the '50s and '60s. As your city commissioner, I will restore the community voice in government. Thank you.
I have worked hard since I've been at City Hall to bring the voice of regular working class Portlanders, people who are not normally heard, to City Hall. I fought the powerful Oregon Restaurant Association to pass an ordinance known as Time, Place, and Manor that gives neighborhoods the first time in Oregon history the opportunity to close down misbehaving restaurants, bars, or taverns. One of my opponents has said, "Randy didn't come up with that idea. A neighborhood group came up with that idea." That was their recommendation he passed, and he's absolutely right. The difference being that I pulled it off the shelf, along with countless other Neighborhood Association studies, dusted it off, and passed it. Some of my opponents have criticized me because they think that I've not been kind to certain housing inspectors, and I will tell you that I plead guilty to that. I am very concerned that anybody in a position of authority would use that authority to gain access to an elderly person's house or a disabled person's house, cite violations, put liens on the house, and turn around and buy it for as little as $1,300. Thank you.
I want to be sure, yes. My name is Bonnie McKnight. I appreciate the invitation to be here today. I decided there was no way somebody who talks as much as I do could possibly tell you anything in 60 seconds about what I want to do. I'm going to tell you about what my leadership training is. It came from Betty Roberts. I met Betty in a class at Mount Hood Community College, a government class, and was lucky enough to work in 1973 legislature as a member of her staff. That year, Governor Tom McCall led the state. There were six women in the House, two women in the Senate. Among the six women in the House were Mayor Katz and Gretchen Kefory. They made, that legislature in the state of Oregon made the Bottle Bill permanent legislation. Senator Halleck got Senate Bill 100 passed, the first land use planning, and a Yumitilla pig farmer passed the first daycare legislation offering state support for single mothers. Mayor Goldschmidt was building the Neighborhood Association and recognition of it in Portland. I'll bring that kind of public leadership to the city council, because it all begins in neighborhoods. That's where the people live.
My name is Scott Stevens. Some brief background: I have 12 years' experience in the private sector, 17 years' experience in government, dealing with public education, legislation, policy, budgeting, and cost analysis. I also have a lifelong history with nonprofit organizations, from volunteer to board chairman managing budgets, fundraising, hiring and firing, and meeting organizational objectives. This is my second year chairing the Woodstock Neighborhood Association. I believe three things make Portland unique: its public involvement, its progressive policies, and its natural environment. So as commissioner, my agenda will include meeting with every Neighborhood Association and Business Association and developing neighborhood plans, making low-income and affordable housing a top priority, implementing community policing with more and better trained officers and an independent citizen review committee, cleaning our rivers and watersheds and restoring salmon habitat, and encouraging sustainable development using leadership in energy and environmental design standards. Together, we can ensure that future generations will also enjoy the unique character of this city that we love. Thank you.
Okay, next round. In this round, I'm going to ask each candidate a question. You will each have 60 seconds to respond, and then we've provided a little bit of a twist. Every candidate has a red card in front of them. That's a rebuttal card. They can have one rebuttal during this round. So if after a candidate answers a question, any one of these candidates chooses to rebut, they hold up the card and they get 20 seconds, one rebuttal. I would ask that after you rebut, you toss your card behind you, so I don't have to keep track whether or not you're...
Mark, can I clarify? Do I get six rebuttals?
You do not get six rebuttals. Does everybody understand the rules of engagement? All right, question number one is to Leonard Gard. Leonard, nearly every candidate for city office has identified the economy as his or her top priority. 60 seconds. What is the single biggest disincentive to job growth in this city, and what would you do about it?
Ooh, tough question. We have many bright, young people moving to Portland, and we need to work with them to nurture new businesses. I think that's the primary thing we need to do. We need to take a more active role in reaching out to business and trying to nurture business here.
Any rebuttals? Then we will move on to Paul Leisner. Ready?
Ready.
It appears to many that this coalition, your coalition, is formed with one purpose: to get rid of Randy Leonard. What exactly is your problem with the incumbent?
Well, thank you for that question. So I think what we've got is we've got a city that's been proud and been successful because it involves citizens. We have open processes based on good plans, missions, policies. That's what's made Portland great. What I've seen with Commissioner Leonard is we've cut off those discussions where we bring people together. That's no longer happening. Things are being done on an ad hoc basis. Decisions are being made. Regulations are being waived without regard to the plans and the goals of the community. We need to have accountability in government. We need to have all of us together. That is what makes Portland strong, and we need to get back on track.
Is there a rebuttal? 20 seconds.
20 seconds. There's a difference between not being listened to and not being agreed with. I've met with Paul a number of times. I've met with a number of the activists here a number of times. Frankly, oftentimes, I don't agree with the positions they take. For example, I think neighborhood service centers are important. My opponents disagree. I think services the city provides ought to be accessed in neighborhoods. My opponents disagree. I've taken it to meetings around the city, talked about it, and I do think it's an important thing for Portland to do, to give Portlanders access to their service in their neighborhoods.
We have another rebuttal.
I couldn't pass it. First of all, individuals are not the public. The citizens, the citizen voice, citizen process is not individual meetings with individuals, regardless of who we are. Secondly, I haven't characterized my position on any of those issues to anyone. I wasn't asked.
Toss your cards behind you, please.
There's so much to talk about in this rebuttal. 20 seconds isn't possibly enough. Alienating people across the city and making them feel disinvolved is not Portland culture and it's not Portland leadership. Demoting people, eliminating institutional memory inside of bureaus, and basically disinfatuating people across the spectrum doesn't reinforce our culture of agreement.
Leonard? Toss your card, Leonard.
I think city government's greatest asset is its employees. I understand that Commissioner Leonard is working for efficiencies, but morale is low, and there's fear in the bureaus now, and that's not going to lead to efficiency and better government.
Anybody else? Are you going to hold your powder? Okay. Next question is to Scott Stevens. Scott, there's a lot of discussion about the East Side Freeway. Do you think it should remain there? And if not, what would you do with it?
I guess one answer is not let it sink into the river. But the East Side Freeway, I don't think we need more freeways. I think we are better served by planning for transit and public transportation as we go into the future, because as a city becomes bigger and hopefully better, we will want to make sure that people can access transit without polluting this natural environment that we possess and that we'd like to keep for future generations.
Okay, next question goes to Bonnie McKnight. Bonnie, please answer this question. Tell us one substantive thing about Randy Leonard that you approve of.
Well, I approve of the fact that he ran as somebody who wanted to make change happen. I think the problem is that the questions in a campaign aren't sufficient to know what that means. And if I don't stop there, then I'm not going to approve of what he did, so I guess I stop there.
Okay.
But we can lash out at it now. It's just the first 60 seconds, right?
If you want to use your rebuttal to respond to anything, yes.
We're not limited now in our comments about...
Oh, yes, that's correct. That is correct. Except for that question. Next goes to Frank Dixon. Frank, we all acknowledge the tragedy of the police shooting late last month, as well as we are all aware of how dangerous is the job of a police officer. Our question is about the role of the Portland Police Union. Is there currently an imbalance between the legitimate role the police union plays in protecting police officer employment rights and the accountability to the public for police action?
I think there is an imbalance. I believe we need to take the union politics out of the citizen review process. There's, right now, an inability, the citizen review process, to require and compel police testimony and investigations, and there's an absence of citizen involvement and leadership in those investigations. I think that type of change, if we could just shift the union back a little bit in that area, we would be able to have a better police force, a better community policing, reestablish trust, and ultimately have a better Portland.
Next question goes to Randy Leonard. Randy, what is the biggest mistake you've made since being in office?
Underestimating the six people surrounding me. They are a group of people that demand more attention per capita than working-class Portlanders do, and I treated them as I would anybody. I'm not being flippant about that. I mean, these are people who I applaud for their dedication and commitment to being activists, but I worry oftentimes about the mom, single mom or single dad, or parents who get up at 5:00 in the morning to get ready to work, get their kids to school, get themselves to work, work all day, get off of work, pick up their kids, go home, cook dinner for the kids, get the homework done, get the kids to bed, and then they have about a half hour before they go to bed. They don't have the opportunity to make their wishes known at city council offices as my opponents do. So I oftentimes, in listening to my opponents, think about those groups of people, those Portlanders, who need somebody to say something for them, to be activist for them. And so I balance what it is my opponents have asked me to do with the interest of working-class Portlanders.
We have a rebuttal.
A number of us, all of us, have spent many, many years in citizen participation and efforts talking and dealing with, you know, working-class issues. In northwest Portland, for instance, we have done a study of children's needs and found out 25% of the families live under the poverty line. We advocate for everyone. We're, as citizen leaders, we just don't advocate for ourselves or our individual interests. Thank you.
Are you waving your rebuttal card?
Yes, I am. I'm throwing it behind the... Perhaps I'm just doing a point of clarification, but I am one of those working people that Commissioner Leonard has referred to. I do have a full-time job. I do have a family, and I do worry about them. And then, when all that is done, I go out and do my activist stuff in that half hour or hopefully more than I have in the evening, in the morning, and other times when I can think about the other people just like me who want to make sure the city gets better and may not have the time and want me to help them do it.
All right, last question in this round goes to Mark Lakeman, and this question is about Portland General Electric. Mark, we're going to assume that you're supportive of at least looking at the idea of public power, and if you're not, please tell us. It appears that eminent domain may be the only way to get there. Can you tell us what you think the upsides and downsides of using this technique are?
Wow. Well, I'm really interested in seeing us gain greater control over our energy systems in general. From, you know, far back before the controversy with Trojan, for instance, I think that Portlanders in general were feeling helpless with regard to the administration of public power. With regard to greater citizen control, of course, I'm very much in favor of it. We've seen with PUDs around the state that rates actually are reduced. So with regard to eminent domain, I don't think that any of us want to take that kind of step because it's very controversial. It's, you know, it's more complex than it would appear, but perhaps it's our step of last resort. I'm not satisfied with seeing us give up control, local control, over our power systems to, you know, a group of Texans. Thanks.
Paul, I believe you're the only candidate who hasn't exercised his rebuttal.
I'm pulling. We've got half an hour to go here.
No, this is the only round in which you're allowed to use that card.
Okay, I will exercise it right now. I would like to say that Commissioner Leonard has made some claims, like with the housing inspectors of all the terrible stuff that they've done. A group of people have come forward with truth on that. And as we've seen this week, the same, similar kind of accusations he made against the Bureau of Licenses and Jim Wadsworth were found to be completely unfounded by a very balanced audit by the city auditor, and I think we're going to see more and more of this stuff. We need to look beyond the rhetoric and see what's really happening under Commissioner Leonard.
Sorry, I have my back to you. That's it for round two. Do I need to remind people to do questions, and if so, to hold them? Are we doing okay? Okay. So this next round is a pop quiz, based on our belief that we... So this next round is a pop quiz based on our belief that we want to test the civic literacy of the candidates. So we're going to ask you some questions, fill in the blanks. Scott Stevens, what's the city's general fund budget for the current fiscal year?
I'm so glad you asked me that, Mark. I appreciate the opportunity to display my ignorance to everybody here.
My pleasure.
I don't really have a clear idea because I was waiting until it was released so I could see it.
No, no, not Vera's proposed budget. The budget that we're operating under at this moment, the general fund operating budget.
Okay, well, I guess I get to flunk this one. I don't know the number, and I'm not even going to pretend to guess that it's anywhere over $1 billion.
We go to the audience to see if anybody wants to. $370 million. To Bonnie McKnight, in this year's budget, how many city employees are there expressed as full-time equivalents?
I don't know.
5,340. To Leonard Gard, what year was the City of Portland Incorporated?
He's saying 1851.
We work together in this city.
It's a coalition. All right, to Paul Leisner, the name of the largest private employer in the metro area?
Intel.
Intel is correct. To Frank Dixon, the name of the city's chief administrative officer?
The CEO. I know it. Thanks, Tim Gru. Randy Leonard gave me that one, but I appreciate the cooperation. Thank you. I knew it, though. I did know it.
You had Tom. Mark Lakeman. Commissioner Randy Leonard is the Commissioner for Public Safety. What is the budget of his office, his office's budget?
I have absolutely no idea.
Well, give us a guess. It's less than $370 million.
Including all of his bureaus and...
No, no, no.
Including...
His office. So it's him, his staff, not his bureaus, just his office.
Oh, okay. It's approximately 400, no, 300, it's approximately 340,000.
$615,000. All right, Randy, we're going to assume that you know many of these facts and figures, so we're not going to ask you that question. We've got a different one for you. You've got before you an unusual coalition of candidates. It's been mentioned before. A group of people who are united by nothing, so much as a desire to get you out of office. What do you think is driving them?
I think that in Portland, people have become accustomed to politicians in general who nod and smile and then go off and do what they want to do. They attend meetings, they have public hearings. I have the temerity at times to actually listen to what people say and then say that I don't agree with them and propose even alternate plans than sometimes what some of these folks would like. For an example, Mr. Dixon is upset with me because I supported the Northwest Parking Plan, which allows garages to be built in Northwest Portland. However, when I was running, I spoke to Mr. Dixon and the Northwest Neighborhoods, and when asked would I support parking garages, I said yes. So I try to be very consistent, be very honest, be as honest as I'd like people to be with me, and I have found there's a reason politicians don't like to make commitments, and I can think of six of them right now.
Okay, that's it for that round. Now we've got questions from the audience. First one is for Mark Lakeman. Will you push for urban development in lieu of the East Bank Freeway?
In lieu of the East Bank Freeway?
I'm just reading them. Will you push for urban development in lieu of the East Bank Freeway?
I'm not sure if this question is asking me whether or not I'm in favor of removing the freeway or not.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay. Well, on one hand, we're all concerned about protecting industrial sanctuaries over there, and on the other hand, as Charlie Hale said, great cities don't have freeways running through the hearts of them. So I want to protect the sanctuaries. I'd also like to see the freeway removed. There's a lot of different, you know, very creative ideas about how to do that. I've supported several of them. I think rejuvenating the East Side and reconnecting the East Side Neighborhoods and the inner East Side businesses, you know, would be facilitated by opening up that waterfront. So in the overall, I'm in favor of doing that.
All right. Excuse me, this is a question for the panel. I think what we're going to do is just ask three of you to respond, so whoever grabs the mic first gets a shot at this. Well, you may want to hear the question first. The question is, wouldn't a strong mayor-form of government provide better neighborhood representation for the council than the present commission form?
I do support the strong mayor-form of government. I supported Bob Ball's initiative, create a strong mayor, and elected city council by districts. And there's a reason. My experience in the Oregon Legislature caused me to see that that process works a lot better for Oregon than the current system on the city council does for Portlanders. For example, we at the budgeting at the city council get budgets that represent what other commissioners' administrative responsibilities are. There is a dynamic that doesn't allow us to ask the kinds of probing questions, as I did when I was on Ways and Means in the Legislature, and I could ask the administrator and was expected to ask the administrator of an agency tough questions about how they spent money. I have found when you do that on the city council, it offends some other officials in the city because there has been this system, this kind of tunnel kind of system where every commissioner has a bureau and that's their responsibility, and it's almost a breach of protocol to ask questions about another commissioner's portfolio. I think a strong mayor legislative body would be healthier for the neighborhoods and that city.
Paul?
The City Club has studied this issue since 1933, and I know many of you are familiar with this. One of the big problems we have in our form of government is that we don't have a division of the branches of government. We don't have an independent legislative body. Having a strong mayor would be one thing, but the thing we need to do is to separate those two parts of our government. I think what we've seen, we've gone along, we've generally gotten good people in office who have been true to the values of the city. I think Commissioner Leonard's shown us how much damage an individual can do to the bureaus because there is no accountability. So I think what we need for the neighborhoods is to have a council where we can really go and they can actually provide oversight to our government.
Well, as someone that's taken initiatives to the city, ideas about neighborhood priorities and objectives that weren't being met, I found that having commissioners directly oversee bureaus enabled us to get work done, to actually engage the bureau because we had elected people that we could turn to as advocates, so it was extremely effective. I do agree with Paul about a need to make some separations between the functions of government, but on the other hand, as Charlie Hale explained to me a couple of years ago, our present form of government has had a lot to do with the livability of our city in the sense that the way that it works is inherently self-evolutionary. There's a kind of dialogue, there's a responsiveness that's inherent that helps us to make us the city that we are. Concentrating power, I mean, just as Paul said about the inherent problems of concentrating power into one person, the inefficiencies, the inaccessibility that would be inherent in a strong mayor-form of government would make us all very unhappy.
Next question is also for the entire panel. I'd ask that only three of you, if three of you choose to respond, and that they be three who didn't respond to the prior question. The question is, what do you think is the most effective strategy to ensure affordable housing for Portland, and what will you do as a city commissioner?
I think affordable housing has two parts, actually, three parts. One of the ways to achieve affordable housing is to look at something other than market-rate housing and new housing. I think we don't do very well with humble housing. We don't do very well with renovation of existing housing. We don't have programs that will allow large houses to be split up into smaller living quarters, and we need some better innovative thinking on all of those things. But the other level of, the other thing we need to deal with is the wages, the standard of living comparisons between wage levels and housing costs in the city. I've worked in workforce. I am a member of the working class. I am a single parent who raised my two children by myself, and I understand how difficult it is, and I've worked for social service agencies all my life. So all of those things are pressures, economic pressures, on the ability to live in this community. We need to make wage levels more reasonable.
First of all, we shouldn't knock down affordable housing to build garages. Something Commissioner Leonard left out when he was campaigning the last time. Or zero setbacks next to affordable housing for garages. There's a number of things. We could go on. But housing is a first step to solve homelessness and build a sense of community. We've added about 17,000 units, but we need a lot more. We need rental voucher programs. All new developments must include affordable housing, no exceptions or no contract. We need creative solutions like Dignity Village that Mark's been involved in, and we need to get our priorities straight. We need to dedicate more money from the city budget to affordable housing. Thanks.
I think we can better use some existing tools in the current city code for tax exemptions. For example, the transit-oriented development tax break. And I think we should take a serious look at some of the proposals the Northwest Pilot Project has recently made for a real estate transfer tax, perhaps using urban renewal funds, and finally, capitalizing a fund for affordable housing. And I understand from reading the paper today that's part of the mayor's budget to do that. So I think that's great news.
Thank you. Next question is directed to Randy Leonard. Do you still feel that the head of the Bureau of Licensing should have been removed in light of the results of the independent audit?
Well, apparently, some haven't read the whole audit. When you read the whole audit, the audit said just what we had said at the Bureau of Licenses, that left on the table by that bureau, uncollected taxes, was what we said, four and a half to $10 million. The audit said $8.2 million. The audit said that we could collect only $2.7 million of that. We've said, probably using the tools recommended by the auditor, we could only collect $2.7 million. But we've also passed a piece of legislation in the legislature that will allow us to look for the first time at the Department of Revenue Records. We've gotten records from the Fire Bureau to see what commercial occupancy they have. The Bureau of Development Services now, if you go get a building permit, there's a line that says, "Put in your business license number." We know that there are businesses that come in to get building permits that don't pay taxes. With respect to the specific reasons for the dismissal of the former director, I can't get into that, other than to tell you the audit didn't address those issues. Those were management issues, issues, once again, of accountability, and issues that I believe most Portlanders, when they're hearing it, the hearing will be appalled at, frankly.
The next question is directed to the panel, so again, we'll ask that up to three of you have an opportunity to respond, whoever grabs the mic first. The question is, as a member of city council, what would you do to ensure that people of colors, civil and human rights, are protected? For example, not shot by police when unarmed.
I'd like to take that on. I think one thing that we need to have happen in our police bureau is to get back to the original community policing that Tom Potter, who's here today, brought to Portland. I think what we're talking about, it's a culture change. It's not doing a few things on the surface, doing a few extra reports. It's changing the culture of who's in there and how they interact with the community. That's one of the biggest things that we can do to turn this around for the long term. The other one is to get an actual independent citizen oversight of what goes on with the police. This is something the City Club's advocated for years, and I think we finally need to move forward and do it.
This is a really tough question. I think one of the things that we need to do is culturally better understand the plight of minorities and African-Americans in our community. I have been appalled at the criticism level at my appointment of Jimmy Brown as the Director of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement as, quote, "being unqualified," a man who spent 30 years working in Portland communities dealing with gang violence. If you want to diversify, you know what you do? You hire people that are diverse. That's how you do it. I had a meeting last week with a group of the minority community who wanted to tell me why they refused to get involved in neighborhood associations. A quote from that group was, "We feel as though we're not welcome. We feel as though issues at neighborhood meetings and by activists are issues that we have nothing in common with. If you want to do something, you have to empathize with the plight of people that are in minority classifications. You have to listen. You have to be willing to change." And white America, whether we like it or not, really do not appreciate the plight of minority communities.
I've worked for 14 years in the minority community doing workforce development in Northeast Portland, and I don't claim to understand people on my own block, but I do understand that we are all human beings, and if you start with the premise that all human beings have value, then you can respect the differences of all human beings. I don't think neighborhood associations have barriers. I think what we lack is cultural communication, and I think we've got to find ways of bridging that gap. It's not by spending public money on diversity training. It's by opening up reasons to join together, which people in neighborhoods automatically do around issues, around emergency situations, around somebody in need, but it's much harder to do when the issues become abstract. It's hard when your issues are how to support your family to deal with traffic patterns on the block next door, and I understand that. We don't do a very good job of bridging that gap in neighborhoods, but that does not mean we don't welcome diversity.
The next question is directed at Randy Leonard, and it's intended, I believe, to be a follow-up to the question that was just answered. Randy, the question is, why did you fight Charlie Hale's in the early '90s in his effort to diversify the Fire Bureau?
I actually didn't fight Charlie Hale's. I actually initiated the only apprenticeship program in the city at the time and brought that to the council, and I think Charlie would tell you that, brought that to the council with then-fire chief Bob Wall. It's called the Apprenticeship Program in the Portland Fire Bureau, which exists to this day, and it has been singularly responsible for hiring more people of color and women than any program in the history of the city of Portland. I have fought every attempt since I have been with the city either as a firefighter or a Portland City Councilman to block the efforts of minority individuals to succeed in their jobs, including hiring of my staff, including the people I appoint to head bureaus. I have the most diverse staff and record of appointment of minority members of the community than any other person on the council.
Next question is also for Randy Leonard, and if a couple of people want to rebut, we'll allow that. Randy, explain your stand on campaign finance reform.
I supported the ordinance came before the council the other day, but what I said, and I believe strongly, and my record supports this, is that is not going to get to the problem. If we pass just what we have proposed to us, people will be sorely upset if they think that's going to fix the problem of incumbency. The way you fix it in this city is to create districts in addition to campaign finance reform. If we have four people that are running from four geographic areas in the city, that's roughly the size of a state senate seat, I could give you a half dozen examples of incumbent, well-entrenched state senators who are knocked off by an angry person that had three pairs of tennis shoes and access to a copying machine. If you have districts in this city and people have the ability to personally contact each voter in the district, that is the most powerful and effective means by which you level the playing field.
You know, watching city council, there was, you know, Commissioner Leonard and Commissioner Franz Scone raised objections to this progressive move on the part of Commissioner Sten and the auditor, and I think it's, you know, it's a, I think what we're doing is seeing roadblocks put in the place of the implementation of what could be a very positive change for Portland and Portland city government. When I testified before the council, I also suggested that the council could immediately adopt an ethical standards ordinance that would require commissioners to recuse themselves... adopt an ethical standards ordinance that would require commissioners to recuse themselves on land use matters if they had received campaign contributions that would create an appearance of impropriety. The Salem City Council has passed such an ordinance, and I think it's well overdue that, that the city council do something immediately to solve this problem, an issue of the city being a place where the citizens do not trust government.
Next question to Randy Leonard. Would you, and if someone wants to rebut, that's fine, would you support city ownership but private management of PGE?
I did. When Enron was in the mix, I joined with those on the council that supported purchasing PGE. I went further than anybody else on the council, saying that I would condemn PGE in order to separate it from Enron. Right now, we're in a process of analyzing the current acquisition of PGE by the company that's coming forward, and I haven't taken a position and won't until I know all the facts and hear the hearings, and listen to the hearings.
I wanted to say that I, I also support having a public ownership of PGE and private management. I think that's something that Eric Sten had talked about one time earlier on. I grew up in Seattle, where we did have public power, that was great. Seattle City Light was a Byzantine bureaucracy that was very, very difficult to operate, and so from that experience, I think it's important that we can control the ultimate destiny of the, of our, of our power utility, but I think we need to have, make sure that we have the best management possible for it.
I get to weigh in on this in sort of a wishy-washy fashion. I think that in the long run, and probably overall, public ownership of PGE will probably be good as opposed to the alternative, which doesn't look like it would offer much in the way of either local control or stability, if it's going to be sold again in five years. But on the other hand, having one public utility and one private utility in the same area with overlapping territory will create pressures, depending on how the rates go. If the private one has the lower rates, there might be a move to merge, and if the public one has more, the lower rates, it might be a move to take over the other one as well. So I have mixed feelings about it, but like I say, in the long run, city ownership and private management may be better than the alternative.
Next question is for Commissioner Leonard, and again, if a couple of other people want to respond, that's fine. The question is about Dignity Village. Should the City of Portland grant a long-term lease on the composting yard to Dignity Village?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Should the city, I'm reading this. Should the City of Portland grant a long-term lease on the composting yard to Dignity Village?
Okay, I think they mean of the composting. I supported the effort to allow Dignity Village to exist after I visited there. I'd made a surprise visit last fall and found that, in fact, there were people whose lives had spiraled out of control that had found some stability that were living at Dignity Village. I talked to a young man who was actually sitting outside of his home, reading the paper when I was walking by, and I said, "It looks like you just got off work," and he said, "I did." He said, "I was an alcoholic, a drug addict, I was able to get a place to live here, get into some treatment, find a job, and I'm saving money, looking forward to finding a place to live." They had a library on site, they had computers online that people were using to access jobs. I told Commissioner Sten immediately that I one hundred percent supported his efforts with the following caveat, that we get smoke detectors installed, and, and we did, and in fact, there was a fire, and the Fire Bureau accredited there, no life loss to having smoke detectors installed. Commissioner Sten and I are now working together to develop permanent structures that replace the structures that are there, so it is a place truly of dignity for people who want to get their lives back in order.
Well, we very much have appreciated your help. Well, Dignity Village has been a hell of a lot of work and a great, a great life lesson. Certainly made me feel grateful for everything that I have, but with regard to whether or not we should help them to buy that piece of land, okay, I'm not going to advocate one way or another, because, you know, hopefully we have options, but do they deserve that piece of land? Absolutely. I mean, the things that they do compared to conventional shelters is astounding, and if more people understood what they're doing for pennies on the dollar compared to in a conventional shelter system, then they would be applauding the people out of dignity. They enable families to stay together, they enable stability, they enable people to keep their stuff with them as they try to get back on their feet. A third of them are going to school, a third of them are, actually have jobs, they're learning how to speak in public, they're learning how to cooperate. Should we give them a piece of land? Let's give them a piece of land, but if we don't, at least let's support them to continue with their vision, because it's on behalf of all of us.
Yeah, in my view, as long as it's working, why not use it and put Dignity Villages up in other places in Portland? Transitional housing doesn't have to be in one spot, it probably should be in other places. We do not necessarily appreciate what we've got if we can set aside homeless people in one ghettoized area. I think that it's worthwhile, if it works, put it in other places in Portland, get people in the places where the jobs are, get them where the services are, and let them make that transition more easily instead of having to go to the compost yard.
Next question. The corporate income taxes in the City of Portland and in Multnomah County are significantly higher than they are in Clackamas or Washington County. Is this a problem, and if it is, what a city commissioner, would you do about it?
Yes, it is a problem. I think the, the patchwork solutions that we have tried to put together to solve stable funding for local government and our schools over the long haul will fail. We need a comprehensive solution. I believe that we have the capacity, and I would during my first hundred days, since the mayor's going to take back the bureaus, to spend time with citizens and with businesses to talk about a regional summit. Rather than looking inward, go outward, talk to all the partners in the region, but get the elected officials in and start talking about a stable funding source, and then stop the insanity in Salem that's stunting business growth, that's crippling the schools and damaging our economy.
I certainly supported the, the income tax, the surcharges that we've had. I think one of the big problems we've got right now is that we have a tremendous imbalance where people are, businesses are leaving our county. This is not a sustainable way to fund the schools. My daughter is in the Portland Public Schools in first grade, I know how much they need that money, but we do need to come up with a regional solution. There hasn't been enough work done on the city council and by the mayor to establish those linkages in the region. We don't have enough legislators within the city to carry this way that we need and down in Salem, but we do when we join together as a region. If we can't come up with a state solution, we must come up with a regional solution and solve this problem.
I'm, I'm concerned that the issue around taxation is, is hidden as being a money issue, and I think it is much more of a trust issue. And I think until we, we can bring people back into the government, it's going to be very hard to find ways to support those things that should be supported and to allow public priorities to be supported. I think now the tools that, that many voters believe they have are the initiative petition, recalls, and tax limitations. None of those are the way to do business, but they're the, unfortunately, I think they're the way we've fallen into. So I would hope, instead of looking at temporary fixes, we could look at rebuilding public trust in how priorities for spending public money are made. I think people will support things they, they believe need to be done.
With that, we are done. On behalf of the city club, I want to thank you all for your patience and your time, and on behalf of the candidates, I want to thank you all for coming.